The July 21st, 2015 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
President.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the July 21st, 2015 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received, for their review and consideration, the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda item onlys. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable, Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Mentor on the Lake. The meeting can also be found on YouTube, our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. First on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Some move. Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
I abstain, I wasn't here. I missed that. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public.
Agenda items.
Agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Hi, my name is Teresa Casca. And while I do not have any direct questions for the board, I just have observations looking at the agenda minutes for this evening. I noticed that we are teaching Arabic curriculum. And looking that over, while I have no problem with Arabic itself, I do have a problem with the curriculum in terms of it's 38 pages long. That is longer than our com- it's more comprehensive than our district policy on literacy and intervention. One in five are struggling in the district as readers. We have a more comprehensive policy for teaching a language than we do for our language for literacy and reading. I also noticed, in the board minute meeting, the policy or the salaries were posted. We are spending $323,000 for special ed personnel here at the board office. While that concerns me, I have a child in special ed. Only one of those people who are in charge of the personnel have a background in special ed. The other two only have administrative licenses. It's a red flag for me. Third, my favorite movie is The Lorax. It's my favorite book. The Lorax talks about in the movie that a tree falls in the direction it leans. I think we need to be very careful in the direction we're leaning with special ed and with literacy in the district. And my final comment, I'm going to leave to The Lorax. Unless someone cares a whole awful lot, is nothing going to get better, it's just not.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A4.
Some move.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I've asked Mrs. Bonas to report on our two new courses of study for the high school, both in Arabic, Arabic 1 beginning in the fall of 2015 and Arabic 2 beginning in the fall of 2016.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I am pleased to announce that the Teachers of Critical Language Program grant that we submitted last January was awarded for the 2015-2016 school year. This amazing grant opportunity has jump-started our efforts to develop an Arabic language courses provided by our district with a fully funded Egyptian exchange teacher. This visiting exchange teacher will help us design units of instruction for Arabic courses and teach Arabic 1 during the 2015-16 school year. Mentor is one of 23 schools across the United States that was awarded this opportunity. Eight of the schools are hosting an Arabic teacher and the other 15 schools will be hosting a Mandarin teacher. The Teachers of Critical Languages Program is a program of the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs of the U.S. Department of State and is designed to increase the study and acquisition of important world languages in the U.S. schools. This program enables primary and secondary schools to strengthen their teaching of Mandarin and Arabic by bringing Chinese and Egyptian teachers to the U.S. to teach their native languages and culture for a full academic year. The exchange teachers receive ongoing, methodological, observation and training opportunities and live and work in an immersive English environment. At this time, I would like to share a brief video that gives an overview of the program.
My name is Zhou Ying. I'm a Chinese teacher. I teach in foreign language.
My name is Aiman Al Thalib.
This is Ju Xin Hong from Mountain Ridge High School, Westminster, Denver.
My name is Ime Montour. I am an.
To increase the number of Americans teaching and studying Arabic and Mandarin, the Teachers of Critical Languages Program awards U.S. schools the opportunity to host an experienced exchange teacher from China or Egypt for one year. The exchange teachers are highly qualified educators from their home countries, have been foreign language teachers for at least four years, have a bachelor's degree or equivalent, and are proficient in written and spoken English. The goals of the Teachers of Critical Languages Program are to increase mutual understanding between U.S. school communities and international communities, to support U.S. schools as they build or enhance programs for teaching and learning Arabic and Mandarin, and to develop lasting ties for U.S. students to learn critical foreign languages and gain in-depth cultural knowledge of China and Egypt from a native speaker.
Anna is me Ahma, Wanti.
Anna is me Queen.
Marhaba Queen.
Marhaba.
Very good!
Additionally, the program enables exchange teachers to learn firsthand about U.S. culture and U.S. teaching methodologies.
I learned system, educational systems here. I learned how the teachers teach, how the students learn here in the American high schools.
U.S. host schools receive ongoing program monitoring and support, visa support for the exchange teacher, monthly maintenance allowances and medical insurance for the exchange teacher, and multi-day orientations and professional development workshops throughout the year.
TCLP program has really helped launch our program. We were a fledgling Chinese program here. We had a great dream and with the current economic state, not a lot of funding, not a lot of places to get started. So the richness of the teachers, the support, the training that TCLP has offered has been invaluable to helping us get our program off the ground.
Bring students from Egypt to America and teachers from America to Egypt, teachers from Egypt to America. This will bridge the gap. This will make better understanding, mutual understanding based on the respect between the two nations. I think that this is the kind of work that I love to do.
To apply to host an international teacher of Mandarin or Arabic, please visit www.tclprogram.org.
The Straight A Grant has increased the foreign language options for Mentor High School students from three to six languages with the addition of Mandarin, sign language and Latin online courses. Pending board approval, the addition of the Arabic course sequence would serve as a seventh language option for our 9th through 12th grade students. Mentor Schools will be one of 11 Ohio Public High Schools offering Arabic courses. Providing language options for students is important because language learning research shows that studying foreign languages benefits all students. The research states that it correlates with higher academic achievement and students' ability to hypothesize in science. It also found to be beneficial in the development of students' reading abilities. So you might ask yourself, why Arabic? Learning another language opens up a whole new world of opportunities, personally, professionally, culturally, socially and economically. In a global economy where nations and people are ever more dependent on each other to support goods and services, solve national and political struggles and ensure international security for everybody, the ability to understand each other has never been more important. Learning Arabic is important because, according to the British Council's Languages of the Future Report, Arabic is the fourth most widely spoken language in the world. It is the official language of over 20 countries and there are over 300 million native speakers of the language. These speakers are largely concentrated in the Middle East, but there are minority groups of native speakers throughout the world. Arabic is also one of the six official languages of the United Nations. Nations who speak Arabic are rapidly growing into powerful global economies. Western Arabic speakers are in a very high demand, but a very low supply. Relatively few Westerners ever venture to learn Arabic. With the growing importance of the Middle East and international affairs, there is an extreme shortage of workers in the West who are versed in Arabic language and culture. Those who study Arabic can find careers in a variety of fields, including journalism, business and industry, education, finance and banking, translation and interpretation, counseling, foreign service and intelligence, and many others. Only 1% of the United States 12,000 FBI agents have any knowledge of Arabic at all and this includes those who only know a few words. Finally, learning Arabic will increase awareness, understanding and appreciation of the Arabic culture and people. Being able to communicate in Arabic can promote intercultural understanding and assist in solving and avoiding future conflicts while also helping business engage in successful international trade. The Teachers of Critical Language Program will provide a fully funded, qualified exchange teacher with a minimum of four years' teaching experience for the duration of the school year. The teacher will arrive with a J-1 visa, accident and sickness insurance, monitoring and support from TCLP, a housing allowance and a stipend of $20,000 for expenses. The exchange teacher will participate in an eight-day extensive orientation in Washington, D.C. and travel back to Washington with his assigned mentor, high school mentor, in the fall and in the spring to attend additional trainings which are fully funded by TCLP. Mentor Schools agreed to develop Arabic language courses as well as a sustainability plan for the program. The exchange teacher will be provided approximately 10 hours a week to schedule outreach presentations in colleagues' classes, area schools or community organizations. The exchange teacher will participate in professional development opportunities that are available to Mentor's faculty, including new teacher workshops, orientations, in-service trainings and faculty meetings. We will help organize opportunities for the teacher to share information about his home country in the school and community and will help him learn about U.S. education, culture and society. We will provide a teacher, provide the teacher with a mentor to assist, assist him throughout the academic year and a community liaison to assist the teacher's transition into the community. We will also help supply transportation services, provide the teacher with a laptop during his stay and help organizing, help organize housing arrangements. Mary Ann Friend, Mentor High School's Foreign Language Department Chair, has volunteered to mentor our exchange teacher named Izat Hassan. We will soon, he will soon be on his way to Washington to complete an intensive eight-day training program. Mrs. Friend will join him on August 4th and we will welcome him to Mentor on August 6th and then he will be introduced at the August board meeting. The exchange teacher's salary will be fully funded by the TCLP grant for year one. We plan to reapply for the grant in year two with the hope that we will be awarded another exchange teacher who will teach both Arabic 1 and 2. If we do not receive the grant in year two, we currently have a high school staff member who is fluent in Arabic. He has been working for the district for the past 12 years as a building sub and tutor and will assist the Arabic teacher one period a day. After he is determined to be highly qualified to teach the position, he will qualify for an interview for year two or three depending if we are awarded the grant for a second year. At this time, I would like to share some information about the Arabic curriculum. We are proposing the adoption of two courses, Arabic 1 and Arabic 2. Arabic 1, which is recommended to begin in fall of 2015, is an introduction to modern standard Arabic and is the first in a two-course sequence at the novice level of Arabic. This high school course focuses on developing proficiency in the standard written Arabic language as well as formal spoken Arabic understood by educators across the Arabic world. Arabic 2 will begin in the fall of 2016 and will continue to build Arabic vocabulary, grammar and general communicative competence. Both courses will have an emphasis on oral communication with grammar and vocabulary taught in context and the cultures of the Arabic-speaking world presented using interactive activities, discussions and readings. Students will also explore differences between standard Arabic and the dialects used in different regions of the Arabic-speaking world. The course will use Ohio's New World Language Standards, which contains a communication standard and a cultural standard. The communication standard is broken down into three modes, interpretive, interpersonal and presentational. Standards describe what learners should know and be able to do as a result of the extended learning sequence. Interpretive communication means that students communicate in language other than English, both in person and via technology. Learners will comprehend the main idea and relevant details in a variety of age-appropriate, live, written and recorded messages, personal anecdotes and narratives in the language. The interpersonal communication standards focuses on learner's ability to initiate and sustain meaningful spoken, written and signed communication by providing and obtaining information, expressing feelings and emotions and exchanging opinions in culturally appropriate ways. The presentational communication standard requires students to communicate in language other than English, both in person and via technology. Learners present information, concepts and ideas and viewpoints on a variety of topics to audience of listeners, readers or viewers for varied purposes. And last but definitely not least, there is a culture standard. The standard, this standard focuses on gaining and using knowledge and understanding of other cultures. Through the target language, the students examine the relationship among the products, practices and perspectives of the, of the culture. Students enhance their understanding by making cultural comparisons and developing cultural insights. The examination of products and practices in relation to shared cultural perspectives enables learners to understand authentic cultural context and use acceptable language and behavior in those contexts. As they become global, globally competent citizens, students will learn that language and culture are linked and they will participate in multilingual communities and various cultures at home and around the world, both in person and via technology. They come to understand and abide by the constraints and freedoms afforded to individuals in the Arabic culture and their own. In addition to the world, world standards, the curriculum includes the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Proficiency Guidelines, or ICAN, statements. They distinguish between 11 district levels of proficiency represented by the inverted pyramid. The proficiency guidelines are a description of what individuals can do with a language in terms of speaking, writing, listening and reading in real-world situations in a spontaneous and non-rehearsed context. For each skill, these guidelines identify five major levels of proficiency, distinguished, superior, advanced, intermediate and novice. The major levels, advanced, intermediate and novice are subdivided into high, mid and low sub-levels. It is important to understand that different languages are categorized by their degree of difficulty for native English speakers. Aspects such as the nature of its writing system, grammar and tonality are some of the factors which contribute to the perceived difficulty in learning a particular language. The language, languages listed in blue are languages we currently offer. As you can see, Arabic and Mandarin are categorized as Level 4 degree of difficulty. This chart demonstrates which proficiency targets students should reach at the end of completion of each instructional year. These can-do statements have been included in the curriculum and used as instruments for the evaluation of the functional language ability. Because Arabic is ranked as a Level 4 difficulty, Arabic 1 students should show proficiency in the novice low to mid range at the end of the year and Arabic 2 students should be around the novice mid level of proficiency. We are also recommending the adoption of the materials from the leading Arabic language program, Al Katab. Arabic 1 students will use Aleph Ba, which focuses on the alphabet, and Al Katab Part 1. Arabic 2 students will use Al Katab Part 2. The Al Katab program uses a communicative proficiency-oriented approach with a fully integrated audio visual media to teach modern Arabic as a living language. The Al Katab companion website is fully integrated with the textbook with interactive exercises, streaming audio and video and course management and grading options for instructors. Using this Al Katab textbook with its companion website facilitates blended learning and flipped classroom models, which have been implemented successfully at institutions large and small. The world in which today's students will graduate is far different than the world in which we know now. American education must prepare students for a world where opportunities for success require the ability to compete and cooperate on a global scale. Learning how to speak a different language provides not only additional ways to communicate, but also a means to comprehend how others understand our shared world. The addition of the elective Arabic language course will provide yet another opportunity to prepare, prepare our students to become globally competent citizens. At this time, I will entertain any questions from the board.
How many students and what grade levels?
The students are in grade levels 9 through 12 and currently we have 12 students that are interested in the course.
If the grant isn't done in the second year, then would an online option be a possibility if we have a relatively small number of students going on to the second level?
We can look at the online option. Currently, it is not part of the Pearson's online options that we offer right now. So we would have to do some research to find an online option. They're not, because of the level of difficulty and because it's not offered in, in the United States in a lot of schools yet, I don't, it's kind of hard to come by right now. But we can research that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonas.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recommend approving the two new courses of study.
Some move.
Second.
Call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm also recommending approval of the high school grades 9 through 12 textbooks as listed on the agenda for Arabic 1 and Arabic 2.
Some move.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, we'll now update you on our Straight A Grant initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, I want to once again offer you an update on the Straight A Grant. Just as in the past year, as one year ago this month, we have received this grant, it has been another crazy month. And I would like to take the time right now to update you, just as I have done in the last 12 months, in each one of the six categories. So starting up in the upper left, we are going to just give a brief update on the hub. So this month, I decided to use a program called Lucid Chart. Lucid Chart is a flowchart diagram that can be used in the classroom and it allows you, when the technology works, to be able to zoom in and present the different areas of the flowchart section by section. So we are going to start by talking about the hub. Even though school has been out over the last month and a half, planning still continues to how we best utilize the space. And as you know, the hub was renovated and completed in January with the grand opening, but we still, as we went through the first six months, wanted to make sure that we are taking advantage in the best way possible of this space. And so one thing that we decided to look at as we go into next school year is using the second floor of the hub for the space for all students who are taking an online course. As you know, the online electives that we are offering next year are the first time that our students are going to be exposed to online learning and we really want to have a little bit more control and support for them to start out. And so all students who are taking an online elective course, as well as those students who are in our blended economics course, so that means they meet on Monday and Wednesday with the teacher, but on Tuesday and Thursday, they have independent time, they will be responsible for reporting to the second floor of the hub. And so there, we will have support if they are struggling along with some of the digital content that we'll be able to provide them that support. So moving on, also on the second floor of the hub, we are going to be offering Calc 3, which is our partnership with Lakeland Community College and Perry. So those students will be located in Team Studio. That will be just one period of day, one period of the day. Right now, it is Period 3-4. As we looked at the numbers, we are approximately anywhere from 70 to 90 students during each period that we will have taking an online blended course or being involved in the economics, an online course or as part of the blended economics course. So that, those students will range in between 70 and 90 students on the second floor of the hub, which is perfect for that space. As we saw last year, in our busy periods, we ended up having anywhere from about 110 to 120 students up there in the middle part of the day during the lunch periods. During those days, we could accommodate them, but it was a little crowded. So the 70 to 90 number throughout the day up on the second floor should be perfect for that space. The next one I'd like to talk about are an update on the classrooms. As of today, 61 of the 62 classrooms are complete and ready for students. We just had a shipment of 48 tables that were delivered today. Our custodians did an amazing job putting them together and they're just now, tonight and tomorrow morning, getting them into the classrooms. So we just have one classroom left to have furniture delivered. That will be happening on Thursday this week. So that will complete all 62 classrooms. So those will be ready for the students when they arrive in the middle of August. We are also in the process of completing the lecture hall renovation. So the physical renovations will be completed on July 31st. The carpeting will then be installed the following week, the week of August 3rd. And then furniture arrives the week of August 10th, which puts a completion of August 17th. seventeenth, just a couple of days before the students arrive. So, that will certainly be cutting it close, but we have confidence in not only the contractor who is completing it, but as well as our carpet installer and our furniture company who has guaranteed the arrival of the first round of furniture on August tenth, and then the tables on August twelfth. And Ohio Desk will be installing that furniture, so at that critical time, when our custodial crew is taxed with teachers starting to arrive, we will not be pulling them away, we'll be using Ohio Desk to install that. And the last thing I wanted to update you on the classrooms is that we made a decision over the last couple of weeks, as having all sixty-two of the core classrooms renovated, we still felt it was important for our other teachers to have that same connectivity with the students. So, when students walk into their classrooms, if they have content that they, the teacher would like for them to share, that quick connectivity is something that we are promoting through our renovated classrooms. And so, with the money, some savings that we had in the grant, we are going to equip every classroom with an updated computer, as well as with an Apple TV, which will allow any student or teacher to immediately connect to that device, to the projector, when they walk into that classroom. So, those are the updates on the classrooms. It's not very happy tonight. An update on Paradigm. Hopefully, as you drove in this evening, you saw some great progress over the last month. They are continuing to work. We have furniture that was delivered last Wednesday. That furniture is continuing to be put together, and that will be finished and in place on Friday. While the furniture is being installed, they are still doing some finishing touches, and that includes landscaping that will be going in tomorrow, and tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, glass, some glasses still needs to be put in, and punch list items. But we are all set for the grand opening on Monday, August third, at four P.M. So, we certainly hope that everyone on the board can attend. I'm just going to give it a second to pop up instead of pressing it three or four times and then going back. There we go. Professional development. Again, as I've mentioned before, the key part of this grant isn't the physical changes. It's going to be the work that we continue to do over the next four years with our professional staff. And so, one of the things that we have been working on over the summer is continuing to develop the plan for moving into next school year with a focus on Schoology, the rotation model, and vocabulary instruction. And so, all of our teachers have received, or will receive at the beginning of September, four days of training in those areas, and so, we're going to continue to move those teachers forward with more of a personalized approach, hopefully during our staff meeting time, as well as other times to kind of meet each of the needs that each teacher has. We are also offering an initial Apex Learning Training, which is a software content provider that we're going to be using for our health curriculum, but we will also have access to all of the other coursework on Apex, and we are going to be offering that on August twelfth. We have invited close to thirty teachers for that training as well. Online coursework, I sort of mentioned this when I talked about the hub, but we do have three hundred and seventy-five students who are registered to take an online course in the fall. Again, we are excited, but of course, we're not going to just turn them loose from the start. We hope to have a little bit more control over that so that they can feel success and we can intervene where necessary. The content for the health course is going to be on Apex Learning, and I do believe that there has been so much work that has been done by the teachers, by our coaches, by administrators, the curriculum and IT departments, over the last two months, that I really believe will help lead us to a successful start with our online coursework starting in August. And finally, I just want to provide a brief update on the one-to-one initiative. All of the MacBooks are in the district. They are now stored at the high school, as well as all of the cases for those MacBooks, so they are ready for our handout dates. We are starting with our seniors on August tenth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty. Moving on to juniors, the freshmen will be on August twelfth. Sophomores will be on August thirteenth. And for any families who cannot attend those dates, we're going to have a make-up date the morning of August seventeenth. We've already dealt with a couple of emails where families are out of town for both of their dates, the make-up date and the date they were supposed to go, and so, we are trying to make accommodations to meet all of the needs of the students and the parents of the district. We know that that is going to be a very hectic week, but we hope that the preparation over the summer will allow it to be a very smooth process for all of our families here in the menor schools. So, we are excited about the one-to-one initiative as we begin the fall. So, I will gladly take any questions about the Straight A Grant and the July update.
I had a question about the hub usage. When you have that upper level with ninety or so students, what accommodations or what openings will there be for teachers who wanted to bring their class to use the hub facilities or for students who have a study call up period and wanted to be able to access that?
Great question. So, there are two primary spaces in the hub, H-room, H-101, which is our Learn Lab, which is downstairs, and upstairs, H-200, which is our collaborative lounge. Both of those spaces still can be signed out by teachers to use. And so, even with having the eighty, seventy to ninety students in there, there is plenty of space to house those, that amount of students, and still be able to have a teacher using that collaborative lounge space or the space downstairs, which is the Learn Lab. And we believe that the upstairs was always, when we looked at the first six months, the upstairs was certainly more crowded, more space for collaboration upstairs than the downstairs, but we hope that just the redistribution of those spaces will help. We also, and as we get into the school year, we'll start to explore more, but two of the renovation of the lecture halls are going to provide some spaces for students to be able to collaborate and work together, where they weren't able to do that before. The lecture halls had seating for about ninety students in there before the renovations. On one side, we'll still have seating up to seventy students to be able to work individually, but on the other side of the lecture hall, there's plenty of space for up to fifty students to be able to sit and collaborate. So, we think that renovated spaces in those lecture halls will give us a couple more options, but I think we're going to need the start of the school year to try to see how that all plays out.
And do you have staff assigned then? Because you mentioned that kind of support piece for students who are doing online courses. How many staff members do you kind of have slotted to supervise that?
Right now, we have one staff member and one administrator that will be up there to kind of help and support the students. I will be another administrator that will be up there consistently, so hopefully two administrators to help the students feel successful to start, and then we will adjust accordingly if we see that there are more staff needed.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The administrator, will that be his only duty, or will that, will he be up there on like a per-period, like cafeteria duty?
Mr. McMahon is taking a great lead on the online coursework, and so, between myself and Mr. McMahon, as well as the library assistant who is up there, we hope between the three of us that we can offer the assistance that is needed for all of the students. So, it's not going to be an administrator duty or anything like that. I think Mr. McMahon is going to be taking the lead on that.
Okay. My other question is, are you going to collect them at the end of every year, or when I get the computers?
The MacBooks. As of right now, our initial thought is yes, just for the upkeep of the devices and to be able to keep them updated, collect them, make sure there's no damage. And so, right now, we haven't made a final decision on that. It's something that we've discussed in our grant implementation team on a every-other-week basis, but I would say that most of the group is leaning towards yes, we are going to collect them.
What was, maybe you know this, what was your, I don't know the word, I'm thinking, what happens if you don't get it back? Because I know that-
If we don't, as the district don't get it back?
Yes.
So, every student at Menor High School received a letter last week describing the policies that we have in place regarding the procedures.
Right.
Let me refresh that, the procedures that we have in place regarding the MacBooks. And in there, there is talking about the students' responsibility for the device. And so, in there, there is an opportunity that if a device is damaged, that there is a certain process in place, that they have to report that damage. If we do not get it back, I would assume that the students would be charged for the full amount of that device.
Okay. Because I just know, over the years, sometimes high school students tend, some of them might disappear.
Sure. We hope-
With their MacBook.
Right. And we hope that, and I think that even leads me to believe even as we've had these discussions in the grant implementation meetings, that it probably would be good to collect them on a yearly basis so that we can handle those problems-
That's right, okay.
-from a year to year, but I think that that is something that we will certainly handle as we go through that process of collection.
And then, who will be grading, like, the online health and the economics classes?
So, the economics course is a blended course, and so, those teachers have those students on Monday and Wednesday, and then Tuesday and Thursday, they have their independent, so those teachers are the ones who are responsible for grading.
Okay.
The health course online, we have structured it, so all of the content is essentially graded through the online curriculum. And so, those, we have, we're looking on finalizing a health teacher who will oversee all of that and who would enter those grades, but essentially, the way the health curriculum is graded, it is all through that online content.
Okay. Thank you.
Nope, no problem.
Just to jump in on a few things that Mr. Lynch was commenting about, and to your point too, Ms. Miller, about the devices in the summer, and Mike is right, we've kind of gone back and forth on what does that look like in the summer for the kids? But if a group of students has an educational need in the summer, I'm going to have a hard time not working with them in terms of getting that done. So, as Mike alluded to, we revisit that question all the time. So, for now, we're collecting, but I can't say that we won't change in the spring if there's something else we can do, that the kids can do in the summer, with some sort of parameters around it.
And Ms. Miller, that is on the agenda for tomorrow morning, as well as we continue those discussions, so.
Okay. So, collecting for the summer except in an as-needed basis?
Right, right, something like that.
Right, right.
And to your point too, about devices wandering off, I mean, it's like, you know, textbooks. If a student loses the textbook, they're responsible for it, so.
Sixty bucks and a little hunk up a hundred or whatever.
Sure, sure. There is a price difference. And then, to Ms. Jisling's point about the spaces for the teachers, that's something that we've been working with our staff on. We do have two classrooms at Paradigm that will be used by our teaching staff that'll be assigned there for most of the periods, so that's part of the equation as well. And the sixty-two room designs, I think too, a lot of them will probably stay put in their new environment.
Right. And again, we still, our goal is to continue to have our teachers feel like their classroom doesn't have to be their single place and their only domain, that the high school is their domain, so they can take advantage of any of the spaces in the high school to be able to teach their content. So, we're continuing to hopefully work towards that. Ms. Briner, go ahead.
Have all the projects in the hub been completed? There were a couple rooms, I think, that were still incomplete. Has that all been done?
All the projects are complete in the hub, yes. The audio-video engineering room were the last two that needed to be completed and have equipment, and that was ordered in late April, which gave us an opportunity to start with some of our Gen Yes students. We do have twenty students who are signed up for the Gen Yes course, which is the students who will be our first line of IT support that will be located in the hub. Scheduling actually worked out perfectly. We have in between two to four students who will be at that desk, either two, three, or four, every period going into next year, and so, we're excited, and we were able to begin the training with those Gen Yes students, so that when another student comes in to want to use that equipment, or a teacher, that we have the beginning parts. We certainly need to offer them more training, but they know how to basically use the equipment now.
With the Gen Yes group, is that a class, and then they're getting additional training and support so that they can improve their skills as well?
Correct. It is an elective course that has an online curriculum. It has twenty-eight units of instruction that they can learn from. You know, in working with the creator of the Gen Yes course, there's the curriculum, there's the content of the course, but there's also the day-to-day operations. And so, the more, we want them to have more opportunities to have that day-to-day operations, where they're actually working with IT and fixing a device and doing those types of things. And then, after, in the meantime, they can have the curriculum as the backup, but we want the hands-on, the application part as much as possible. And so, there is a curriculum, but there's also these items called TAPS, which are, that they will be working on completing that will be assigned to them. So, if a student comes and they have a device that is not working properly, a TAP gets assigned to them, and they work to problem-solve that. They can work together to problem-solve it, they'll then work with our IT department, and hopefully, if they, they'll hopefully get it taken care of and they'll report it out. But the TAPS are also this, a teacher comes in and there's a program such as Zapshin or Educan, which are two Web 2.02 programs that we have used with our teachers, and a teacher just might need a little bit more time or assistance. We are going to work with our students and have them trained and have an understanding of those programs, so that they also can work with the teaching staff to assist them on those types of programs as well. And so, we want to use them not only as our first line of support, but also as an opportunity to continue to push our digital curriculum forward.
Will they be able to earn IT certifications through the curriculum, or especially maybe not the first year subsequently?
Right, so they will have, they will have one, they can take the course up to three times, so they could have three years of elective credit for that. But I think what you say is something that we definitely want to look into, is not only in IT, but in some other areas that we could offer at our high school. And so, as we move the grant into years two through five, that's exactly what the grant has kind of laid out of how can we give our students more opportunities or pathways for their success.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
How long is, I know it's hoped that they get it done probably in a semester, but how long would a health student have to actually complete the online health?
A semester. So, they do have a semester. You know, students that work at it at a little bit quicker pace, we anticipate that some of them might be done in a quarter, a nine-to-ten-week time, and we know that we are going to have some students who will finish right at that semester, and we anticipate that there's going to be a handful of students that we're going to need to do some serious support for to make sure that they get it done at that semester point.
And if they do not, I don't even know if you know this question, but, you know, I think like, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. You're fine, you're fine.
Will they take an F on their transcript as if they failed the semester course the first time and then continue on, or will they just get extra time? Have you thought about that?
Yes, and I don't know, I'm not sure we'll be able to offer extra time, just like not completing the course when they were supposed to. If they had not completed the work for a regular health course, they will probably have to re-register and take the health course over in the second semester, and-
And that would, that would be, we'd have to have another license, so what you're saying is the license is like for a semester?
For the Apex, no. We're very fortunate with the Apex, that that program, what we have purchased is we have purchased an Apex license for every student for every content area. So, if I'm a student, and this is going to be something that we offer, that training in August, if I'm a student taking that health course, when I log into my Apex, and I also have a biology course, an algebra course, there's also Apex content that our teachers will be able to use to hopefully assist in their classrooms. And so, we're not essentially paying for an Apex license, so it's not like we're going to have to pay for that student again.
Okay.
We already have that license to be able to offer that content in Apex. If it was Pearson, you are thinking exactly correct, but those are the elective courses.
So, it's not like they used up their health and they had to get a second one?
It's not, it's not. No, we will not have to pay to get an additional health course. They have access to all of the content within Apex Learning. So, that's a great question. You're thinking exactly right for the Pearson.
And then, would they have to start the health over again, or can they?
I would believe that that's probably the route we would take.
Okay.
I think when we get to that point, we're going to have to make some decisions, or even before then, but just similar to any other course that they were not successful in completing-
Right.
-then they're going to have to go through that process. They made a choice to not complete the course in the timeframe with the expectation, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
When you did roll out of the one-on-one devices for the middle schools, the parents participated, especially since it was kind of shiny and new. I know you're doing the one-on-one for all of the high school kids. Are you hoping that a lot of parents will attend?
We are expecting. We, they cannot pick up their device without their parents. And so, the way we have it in the letter that went out, all of the parents and students will arrive on their given night, we hope, and if it's, this is being broadcast, if any parents are watching, we don't want you to show up at five-thirty. We want you to kind of space it out, so we have it coming, parents coming in from five-thirty to eight-thirty, and when they arrive, when twenty parents get there, twenty parents and students, we will move them to a room. We will have an eight-to-ten-minute short video that they will watch that will kind of go over, and an opportunity for them to ask questions. Then, they will have an opportunity to pay their school fees and to collect their schedule. They will then move over into the Student Center, where they will pick up their device and their case. They will then move into the hub, where we'll have staff in- They will then move into the hub where we'll have staff in there to assist them because they have to sign on the first time here as being part of, in the mentor school's domain. So they'll sign on for their first time in the hub, put their case on, and then once we see that they are signed on and they have their case on, then they are free to go. So it'll, we're expecting about 30 to 40 minutes for the entire time, and we have a process hopefully in place to make it where there's not too many stalls along the way for our parents and our students.
Just, I just want to mention too, when you were talking about students going through and earning like credentials or badging or things, certifications, I think that, once the dust settles a little bit on this testing issue we have in Ohio, I think competency-based education with certification is going to be something that our kids will be able to get in the probably two or three years. So I think that would be really good for our kids for jobs and for colleges.
And I think our grant has positioned us really well to go that route. Where other school districts are going to be scrambling to make that happen, I believe the grant has, will really put us in a place and will be well poised for that.
I have one other question.
Sure.
With online learning, or just, you know, as another option, do you foresee a time when remediation that would normally be offered as a summer school option might transition so that you could make up classes that would not have typically been offered in the summer? You know, more, other than, you know, English and science and math, that you had a problem with a class, that you could make that class help you out online?
Yes, I do. Short answer and long answer would be yes, and I think too, our kids and teaching staff, because the teachers have expressed a lot of interest too in doing different things for our kids, and we started that last year, we're expanding on it this year, and I could see that coming down the pipe too, is kids that want to either get ahead or provide remediation, things like that, different programming. I think that's, the devices and the grant allow more flexibility to do that, and I'm thinking why wouldn't we offer if we can do it within our financial constraints?
One last thing, I'd be more than happy if any board member after the meeting would like to take a tour and just see an update of Paradigm as well. Hopefully you'll be able to see it in a couple of weeks at our grand opening, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or take a tour of Paradigm after the meeting as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lynch. Mr. President, members of the board, each year a resolution is recommended to adopt a Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan called Blizzard Bags, which allows us to post classes online in the event we have more than five calamity days next year. As you know, we're shifting, and the state of Ohio shifted from days to hours, but Blizzard Bags are still an option. I'm recommending approval of the resolution, adopting a Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan if we so choose.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Breyner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the parent-student handbooks for our eight elementary schools, three middle school, the high school, and the CARES program at the Hoynes Building.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Breyner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and Agenda Items C2 through C5, in addition to the addendum that was at your place this evening, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Breyner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the Administrative Staff Reappointment Book for the 1516 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Breyner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the administrative stipend salary and salary ranges for the 1516 school year.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
First and second.
Second.
Please call the role.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Breyner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hoynacki, come on down. Just making sure. Good evening. Tonight I'd like to take a moment to introduce Mr. Corey Hoynacki to the Mentor Schools Administration Team. Mr. Hoynacki joins the administrative team at Memorial Middle School as the Assistant Principal to Mr. Dudziak. For the past six years, Mr. Hoynacki has been an English teacher at Mayfield High School and has had various leadership and coaching opportunities. He received his undergrad degree from Ohio University in the area of English Literature, and then pursued a degree from John Carroll University in the area of Language Arts. While at Mayfield High School, Corey received his Educational Administration Degree from Ursuline College. Mr. Hoynacki will be working closely with Mr. Dudziak and is eager to begin his administrative career at Mentor. Mr. Hoynacki is married to wife Kim and a proud dad to Harrison, and we're glad that they were able to join us this evening. We've also had our new administrative orientation yesterday and today, full day, so we've been putting him through the paces, and I think he's fared pretty well. But I'd like to introduce Mr. Corey Hoynacki. Congratulations.
I'll make this fairly quickly, because my wife's doing an unbelievable job right now within 11 months. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, good evening everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. This new career path that I'm beginning today is truly evidence that the best opportunities find you when you least expect them. I've always known and respected mentor schools, and growing up going to Brush in South Yudlinhurst and coaching at Mayfield, Mentor has also caused me some heartache along the way as well. But as I began to meet the wonderful people at Mentor Schools, I knew this was the right fit for me, and I'm thrilled that Mentor felt I was the right fit for this position. As I embrace this new opportunity in my educational career, I have taken a moment to thank a few people. First, I need to thank my parents. They've always taught me the value of education and led me down this path where I am today. Second, I must thank my wife, Kim. I'm lucky to have married my best friend, and it was she who encouraged me to pursue administration and has supported me every step of the way. And third, my son Harrison, over there, he is almost a year old, he has no idea what's going on right now, but his happiness and well-being is the greatest motivation I could ever have. Finally, I need to thank Mentor for bringing me into the Cardinal family, I'll be a Minuteman though, to be clear, and providing me the opportunity to work with incredible professionals and even more incredible students. So thank you very much, and I'm thrilled to be starting at Memorial Middle School.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Mary's going to start us off under Board Business.
The Mentor School Board is proud to present two scholarships this year of $500 each to two very deserving Mentor graduates. I wish to thank Mrs. Jisling for assistance in reading applications this year. All applications received were deserving. Unfortunately, with limited resources, we can only award two applicants this year. However, I'm certain all will have bright, successful futures ahead. The Mentor School Board Scholarship is based on financial need, academic performance, character, and leadership qualities, extracurricular and community service participation, and teacher and guidance counselor recommendations. Is Adrian Miller present this evening? Please join me. Thank you. Adrian graduated from Mentor High School with an accumulation of GPA of 4.293. Outside of the classroom, Adrian has played tennis and soccer at Mentor High School, and has been a coach, referee, and counselor for Mentor Youth Soccer, is very active in his church and related activities, Rachel's Challenge Club, Principal's Advisory Board, National Honor Society, and has received numerous awards, both athletic and academic, most notably being named an AP Scholar with Honor Award, as well as National Merit Commended Student. In the classroom, his fascination with science and math are evident in his transcript, which lists numerous honors and AP courses. Some of the words that were used to describe Adrian are: well-rounded, intelligent, thoughtful, genuine, motivated, conscientious, and dedicated. All of these qualities will no doubt be an asset for Adrian as he takes his next step to further his education at Denison University to obtain his undergraduate degree as an aerospace engineer. Please join me in congratulating Adrian Miller. And is Grace Yanisich present? I don't think she was able to make it tonight. I believe she had to work, she was going to try to come later though. But I will say that Grace graduated from Mentor High School with a 4.23 accumulation of GPA. She's been active in girls' soccer since the age of nine. She has also participated in Leadership Lake County, National Honor Society, Safety Town Project Hope, youth soccer camps, her church, and Kick for the Cure. Among the many academic and athletic awards she has received, she is most proud of receiving the NOC All-Conference Soccer Player Award as a Senior All-Star Player and MHS Mentor High School Hustle Award. This was after recovering from a devastating ACL and meniscus injury and surgery that took her eight months to fully recover. Looking at her transcript, it's obvious Grace was committed and focused on her academics at Mentor High School, excelling in a rigorous schedule full of honors and AP courses. Some words that are used to describe Grace: friendly, prompt, courteous, polite, great attitude, organizational skills, professionalism, and a desire to perform at the highest level possible. These attributes will help her to be successful as she attends Duquesne University in the fall. She plans to become a physician assistant. Again, help me in congratulating Grace.
Very nice. Thank you, Mary.
Next on the agenda was legislative report, and I've asked Mr. Wilson to cover the impact of the new state two-year budget.
And I've also asked Matt to assist on the educational impact, there were some significant changes instructionally, but on the budget side, or the finance side, this was a very abnormal budget process. Historically, from the initial budget presentation to approval by the House, to approval by the Senate, to moving to Conference Committee, and ultimately being enacted, things get better every step of the way. This year, unfortunately, we started off on that pattern of improvements in the House, modest additional improvements in the Senate. Conference Committee basically confirmed the Senate version of the budget bill, but the governor vetoed year two of the tangible personal property hold harmless payments and some other lesser nuances to the state subsidy. The net effect is that over the two-year period, we will lose $2,558,065. Both because we're no longer a guaranteed school district and with declining enrollment, we'll see a declining base subsidy, even though there's a $100 increase per student, recalculated state share, recognizing the wealth of a community on the premise that wealthier committees have more wherewithal to raise monies locally to support education and therefore need less state support. With the new budget bill, our state subsidy will be 21% of the base funding amount per student, recognizing a combination of our property wealth and our income wealth as compared to state averages. So, again, different than past years, the two-year impact will be the loss of $2,558,065. And we will factor that into our budget development, although for the 1516 years, we are held harmless at last year's amounts, the decrease comes in year two. So we'll pick that up a little bit in the budget, but primarily through the new five-year forecast. In addition to that, there were some significant instructional aspects to the budget different than most years, and Matt's best to speak to those.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Just a few thoughts on that from the education side. As most of you know, or if you hadn't heard, the new budget bill eliminates park testing, which I cannot say enough how much the input from the teachers and other educators in the state of Ohio, and particularly MTA, when we, I asked for their input on park testing, was able to testify how much the teacher voice really made an impact. So, again, I appreciate the work of our staff because I think that was invaluable in making changes to park. The negative side, one of the negative sides of eliminating park is that's three years we wasted in the state of Ohio and probably close to $60 to $70 million as a state, and something we just threw away. So they were making some changes, honestly, probably not enough, and just after, a day or two after they ditched park, they signed an agreement with AIR, which is American Institute for Research, to pick up the other portion of the testing that we are required to do. Now, we do use AIR, the state does already, for some testing, and they've been in Ohio for at least 10 years with different assessments. So, the feedback from the teaching staff was, air is better, but not much. So I think we're still going to have issues as we go through this change in Ohio. I have said and I continue to say, we need an educational reset in Ohio. It has been very frustrating for educators, teachers, administrators, all of our staff members, who have been working their tails off, quite frankly, over the course of the past few years, to make these adjustments set by legislators who did not seek input prior to mandates. So, I am hoping, again, that once the dust settles on some of this, that cooler heads will prevail and there'll be a voice at the table of educators, teachers, administrators, parents, quite honestly too, from our PTA organizations, and I'm hoping that we have some representation from our local PTAs in Columbus. So, that's a frustration that we put our kids' needs second to maybe some of the mandates that we've been doing. I'll also tell you too, straight A funding remained provisionally, went from $250 million in the last budget bill to $30 million, but we are going to still make some attempt with our work in the Ohio Blended Learning Network and with Patel for Kids to look at some credentialing, some competency-based education opportunities, and we've been having bimonthly phone calls on setting that up. So that's still something that we're going to take a look at. The other big thing that I was really frustrated about from the budget bill was they could have and did not take on the charter school issue when they should have, and it sort of blew up over the weekend with their leadership that follows at ODE in terms of who's in charge of the charter school movement, and received a resignation on Saturday and announced it on a Saturday night. I just, I have problems ethically how that was done, and with the money that the charter schools have been receiving from the public schools in Mentor and in the state of Ohio. I also take exception with how ODE handled the recording of testing results and accountability from those charter schools and how they made changes that were conversed to law. So I'm hoping that we get some answers soon, that we get some relief soon, and that those of us that are invested in our kids and not in companies and politics can come up with a plan jointly as we move forward.
And just to help put Matt's last comments in context, this fiscal year, we lost just under $1.2 million in charter school funding deducts and special targeted voucher payments. So the impact's very real. So, the impact's very real, even in a very high-performing school district like ours.
Be glad, I think either one of us to take any questions on.
Thank you for your work in trying to pay for some sanity in terms of park and that continuing plea from the grassroots level as to what the impact is on students and how difficult it is to do right by them with some of these pronouncements coming down from Columbus.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Wilson?
Yes. I'd like to take just a moment and walk you through the fiscal year-end high-level review as I prepare to ask for approval of June financial statements. I know you won't be able to see this chart well, but it's the same one we use in our budget book and in our forecasting documents. The bottom line is, we collected $5,117,000 more than we had originally budgeted. That's attributable to two primary sources. The first is a higher-than-certified collection of current taxes, along with delinquent taxes, of those people trying to avoid the sale of the delinquent tax liens this summer. And the second was, as a result of delay by the Ohio Department of Education last June, that being June of '14, we did not receive our catastrophic cost reimbursement of almost $300,000. As a result, this year, we received last year the '13-'14 payment, as well as now our current payment for '14-'15. That created a positive variance of over $600,000. So, on the revenue side, good news primarily attributable to those two items. Again, I apologize, the print's a little small, but the significant thing here is the year-over-year changes we see in revenue. Three of the last six years, we've seen a decline in revenue, and we predict a decline in revenue each year going forward. Even with the good news in the state budget for 15-16 of not losing the tangible personal property, we will see a 5.6% decrease. To put that in a context, in '14-'15, we received $900,069 less than we received in 2005, 2006, nine years ago. So, we are seeing significant challenges on the revenue side. On the expense side, we had a positive year. We underspent the budget by $4,340,000, which is a 4.2% positive variance, primarily, again, in the area of salaries and benefits, some smaller opportunities in the discretionary spending categories. Again, most significantly, you'll recall, our theme for the 2014-2015 fiscal year was learning to do more with less, and you'll see on this chart, our year-over-year growth of expenses was .05%. And if you go above the line there and look at the last five years, going back to the tail end of the Great Recession, we've been very sensitive to two dynamics. One is every year having less revenue than the year before, and the impact of the Great Recession and trying to adjust the budget to survive until there's a better economy. So, we've been very aggressive without harming all the initiatives that you've heard about with instructional technology and the other teaching and learning strategies throughout the district. Going forward, again, the 15-16 number looks larger than it really is because the budget performed so much better this year than originally, but the national growth index throughout the United States for K-12 instruction is approaching 5% a year, recognizing federal regulations, various state regulations, and the different cost structure that schools have than a general consumer. So, we still are anticipating every future year of having budgets growing year-over-year less than the inflation rate for K-12 education. Again, I apologize for the small chart, but this is my grade card that I present to you every year. The average accuracy rate, if you will, for collecting of revenue for '14-'15 was 94.4%. We're somewhat challenged in that the County Budget Commission will not certify any tax collections above 96% of what's billed in the current year. They do not anticipate delinquent collections. They do not anticipate collections above 96%. So, we are restricted in what we can formally budget, but every year, the primary positive variance has been those extra collections. The average during my tenure in the district is 96.1% accuracy on the revenue side. On the expense side, this year, we had a 95.8% accuracy rate. As I disclosed to the board, we discovered a miscalculation in the salaries and benefit category that overstated the budget in that area. If we factor that out, the refinements to our budgeting model and forecasting model had us come in at a 97.7% rate, rapidly approaching the target accuracy of 98% that we're shooting for. And over my tenure, the unadjusted growth rate's 96%. It's about 96.5, adjusting for '14-'15. The bottom line's always where we end up. This year, after reserves for purchase orders issued for materials not yet received or paid for, we have a balance of $47,288,000. The board's expectation of Matt and I was to balance 2016-2017. We've been working on that for three years, and you'll see we're pleased to show a balanced budget for '16-'17. However, the numbers turned red in a very large way in 2017-2018, a predicted deficit of $21 million, followed by a predicted deficit of $57 million. And again, the numbers are small on there, but next year, we're expecting revenues of $89.6 million, expenses of $105.8 million. So, clearly, we began in 2012-2013, spending more money than we take in and spending down our cash reserves. We knew that would come. We know that's an impossible dynamic of school funding in the state of Ohio, but the gap will widen as we go forward. And finally, on this chart, you'll see, we tracked a cumulative loss. 2004-2005 was a huge year in the world of K-12 education. There were significant changes in tax policy that adversely affected local funding of public education, as well as dramatic changes in state funding of education. And if we use 2004-2005 as our base year, this year, we lost $9.3 million compared to the year before all those tax policy and funding policy changes were made, and cumulatively, we've lost $36.4 million. So, had they just left us alone in 2004-2005, we would be predicting balanced budgets through Our challenge is on the revenue side, much more than the expense side. And again, this very, one of our key financial indicators, we always illustrate, and as I mentioned, 2012-2013's the year that current expenses exceeded current revenue. This year, we had a very good year with that .05% year-over-year expense growth and the extra collections of delinquent taxes and the catch-up catastrophic, so the lines came back together. But now, the natural flow of the budget shows that gap widening now and predicting those deficits. So, in summary, we had a good year, oops, and we also are growing some other revenue sources. As you know, one of the goals we've had as a school district is to find opportunities to have non-tax revenues come into the district. And in addition to the primary mission and vision of the school district of teaching and learning, we've also built some models, and I look at things a little bit differently through my lens of the district than many others, but to me, food service is a business. The We Care program's a business. The Cares program, while it serves many of our students, has also opened to non-resident students. Our treasury management model, the district advertising monies we're bringing in. So, you'll see that we have seen gains year-over-year, and many of those, we're seeing some signs of a need for food service increase. Food prices increased dramatically this past year. We've redesigned the We Care program significantly, and we're readjusting the tuition side to reflect marketplace and the improved quality and operation of the program. But we are very active and trying very hard, and again, it's not gonna fund the entire budget, but we do spend time looking for opportunities for non-tax revenues. So, having said all that, we've presented our June 2015 financial statements, and I would ask that they be approved and placed on file for audit.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
It's recommended the investments for June 2015 be ratified.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Was that Mary?
Yes.
Yeah. Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
It's recommended the two inter-fund transfers listed in Exhibit 7-C be approved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
It's recommended the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D be approved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
It's recommended the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E be approved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
It's recommended the approval of an invoice listed in Exhibit 7-F be approved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle. That completes my items this evening.
Any unfinished business? No. New business? Hearing of the public? Any items other than on the agenda? Hearing none? We will be going into executive session. Do we have a motion?
Sum of.
Superintendent and Chief Financial Officers' review, evaluation.
And negotiations.
And negotiations. We will not be voting on anything, so.
We may consider.
Yes. Okay. Would you all like to stay and wait for us? I figure that. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.